All right, so let's open up the item adoption of the agenda to discuss the petition matter immediately instead of discussing it at the committee of the whole meeting. We need someone to move and second this motion. Councilor Grimaud, you move that we adopt the amendment? Seconded by Councilor Joinier, all those in favor? Thank you. So, Mr. Gadoua.
Yes, my name is Richard Gadoua, and I represent the Chamey-Brasseau Residence, where there are 51 residences, one of the major roads in Clarence, 103 adults, 10 children, 123 automobiles driving along that road on a regular basis. We are regularly complaining about the state of the road. If we were to get the same treatment that Baseline Road did get, this would be quite acceptable. You know that traveling along country roads is not a very sanitary practice. There are always dusts in the air. There are many residents, and we figure that we pay over and above $500,000 worth of municipal taxes. So, I believe that you have the same hill on Brasseau on the other side. Please, ma'am, please, don't, don't... Hey, hey, hold on now, please. Let's not come up with any comments. We don't have time for this. I've always stated that it was always a costly proposition to repair this because we had problems at each and every time we had rainfall. We've performed a lot of work on roads. This year, however, the budgets have been drawn up, the contracts have been handed down, and let me tell you, we were called upon to prolong some previous contracts because asphalt prices have risen by some 30% this year, and we've been hard hit by price increases, oil, and bouvier treatment, for example. We were supposed to put down two coats of asphalt. This is what we've done on asphalt. Things worked very well. This practice was acceptable. That's what I'd like to see with time. If we come back next year, we'll revisit that issue. We can't take any decisions at present, sir, because we're waiting for a new council to be elected. Hopefully, all of the members of this current council will be re-elected. Well, we hope that a definite decision will be taken so that it can be considered as the next budget. Well, it's very expensive, though, to maintain this stretch of roadway. Of course, it sends to reason that when you lay down gravel, if you're performing grading work, of course, it does cost a lot. Well, I've pushed for years to have Baseline worked upon. Now, of course, there's a lot of work to be done there, and I'm totally in agreement with you that work has to be done there along the hill. Councilor Joinier, Brasseau is in between two streets that have been paved, in between Juget and Baseline. So, you know, it would be nice to have trucks there that are already in the vicinity, and even if I take this example during the summertime or the wintertime, should I say, the salt trucks are easily channeled from one area to another. And we are, there are many residents that are along that stretch of roadway, and of course, that's why we draw this to your attention tonight. Well, I'm totally in agreement with you here tonight, but we're going to have to wait upon the 2019 budget. We'll push this item, of course, and if Mr. André Lallon wishes to lend us an ear tonight or to you an ear as to your claim... And that used to be the ward I used to live in at that time. I know exactly what the situation is, and we'll push that along next time around. It all depends on municipal elections. Of course, this is within our priorities, as I'm talking about the current elected representatives right now. So, of course, all we need to do is to perform work in this area. Well, of course, we'll persevere with this. If we don't have any results, we'll come back to you. Well, now, you know, I believe at the beginning of December, the new council will be elected, and as of the beginning of December, we'll jump into that budget. So, it could be a Christmas gift, Mr. Mayor. Well, yes, it could be. Well, Mr. Rochon has a nice white beard, and you can stick a white cap on his head, and he can be Santa Claus. Well, at the beginning of December, this would be a thing to be considered. Well, of course. Is there not a system that could be implemented to train the individual that operates the grader? You know, instead of laying down, you know, gravel along those ditches that surround that area, could we not have something implemented until 2018 that ensures a better maintenance of this area? Mr. Leonard, I'll have you answer this. Well, Mr. Mayor, of course, we'll take a look at the extent of the operations, but we can take a look at the ongoing operations in that vicinity. It's a bit difficult for us to maintain those roads laying down gravel because gravel stays embedded, and of course, especially during the wintertime, we have to plow back snow even further. So, snow winds up accumulated in the ditches. The state of roadways is even worse when there is snow that accumulates. Well, if you push stone on the side and push it onto the ditches, it actually makes the situation even worse. We've made a request for a new culvert, and the existing culverts are backing up because of the gravel there or the accumulation of gravel. We don't have enough money, I understand, to pave roadways, but we have to make use of logic to implement a system so that the situation doesn't worsen and... You know, we're not... Can I have your name and your address, ma'am, just for the purposes of... Well, my name is Joanne Jusobendic. I live at 1102 Brasseau. I see. Mr. Gadoua, are you finished with your presentation? No. Definitely, we'll be back in December to address the new council. Ma'am, you'll have to stand up and give us your name and your address. I live in 1148 Brasseau Street. I'm directly living on the hill. In the morning, when I go off to work, I drive an oncoming traffic, school buses cross me. Rocks or gravel is piled up on our property, and water deviates onto our property, and the wall that we paid $6,000 is now brought down because of previous work. And our entrance way is now, has now cresting up and down like this. One at a time, please, one at a time. Your name and your address. Pierre-Pierre, 1140 Brasseau Road. Carl came over to our place along with the supervisor, and they told us that they could not work on these ditches prior to August, but as I stated to them, this is an emergency situation. The water does not go into the ditches because the road is lower than the rest of the surrounding land. So, each and every time the grader goes down the hill, it brings down the gravel but plows down the road. I'm paying someone right now to take care of our property because we can't even cut the grass properly anymore. I was asked to shore up the retention wall, and I was told to shore up the retention wall at a ratio of three to one height-wise, and I was told that I could be granted a permit to even shore up my wall up to nine, to a height of nine foot. Look, at this point in time, I can't even get into my home on bicycle. That doesn't even make sense. Mr. Leonard will look into the situation and give you a result of his expertise. Well, I was told last time around, I was laughed at last time around, and they told me about this hydrant on my yard, which is something that I put in there. It's like a personal item, basically, and I can't even enter into my entrance way. And the amount of taxes I'm paying is ridiculous. I want to obtain the services I pay for. What we'll look into this, Mr. Better. Just leave your phone number to the person supervising roadwork, and he'll contact you back. Yes? I know that the next town council will have to look into certain matters next time around to ensure that the department performs a proper analysis of Brasseau Road as long as its needs so that we can address this as of 2019. If we're encountering damage problems, of course, there are certainly some steps that we can implement to ensure that the department can on a medium and long term or short and medium term basis can alleviate the situation. What happens also with this situation is that during the first snowfalls, the plows will leave snow completely onto the gravel surface. So, really, the snowplow operator would have to raise the grade of his snowplow. That's the time in which I receive the most phone calls from citizens that are discontent or... Because they tell me that they've removed more gravel than they've removed snow. So, Mr. Garaville, come before town council at the beginning of December because contracts have now been given out, and as of December, now will be the time to mention this. I thank you for appearing before council tonight, by the way. Please, stand. Yes. 1405 Brasseau Road, Mr. Mayor. One of the grader goes by and puts in and plows gravel into the ditch. The operator doesn't know what to do or doesn't do his job properly, and he should do like other grader operators and round out the surface. And the milk truck operator, because I'm operating a dairy farm, told me, well, they told me that my road is not graded properly. And I pay my taxes, of course. You must have heard about my situation. Yes, I heard about your situation, sir. Now, I figured that when he goes along with his grader and plows down the road, he plows the gravel on either side of the road. And now, if you were to round off the surface of the said roadway, things would be much easier, and when there's rainfall, rain would not accumulate in ditches on either side, especially when the snowplow operator plows the snow and plows the snow and piles it up so high that there's more gravel than snow that accumulates in ditches finally. Well, take a look into this situation, will you, Mr. Leonard? We will. Please give your name. You've stated your address. What's your first name? Gilles? Gilles Hupé. Family name is Hupé, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Well, thank you. Any other questions, other comments that you'd like to bring to council's attention? Well, thank you for having attended here tonight, one and all, and we'll look into this and take care of the matter. Thank you. Let's go on now to the next item on the agenda. All right now. Go for it, ma'am. I was fairly nervous when I saw all of these people in attendance. I figured it would be best if they had their say, and now it's my turn.
First, I'm going to talk to you about little free libraries that we're going to build. As you know, we're closing the branches in Clarence Creek and in St. Pascal. Next week is the last week for them. And we spoke with the schools, and they are going to keep some of the books, some of the books we're going to take with us. A lot of the books are outdated, which is a shame because they're all brand new, it seems to me. But can't keep history books from 1994. So, but what we're going to do is we're going to save some of our really nice books, and we get some really nice donations. And in the meantime, before we get our bookmobiles up and running, we are actually going to have these little boxes that are going to be in public locations. I sent you pictures of them. They look like little houses, and people can just go there, grab a book, put one back if they'd like. They're very popular. I know in Castleman, they've already put in 14, mostly at parks. Now, what we're going to do is put it near the baseball diamond in St. Pascal. No? Why no? It's very close to the ice rink.
Put it closer to the school. You have a old age home next door.
Yeah, right next to the... It's right next to the home.
Yes. So, I would suggest it to go more on the other side, closer to the school, so you don't get any damage done to your...
I'm actually not worried about damage to it. They've done a lot of... Sorry, there's been a lot of research on it, and very few people actually damage the boxes because of what they represent. More people steal the books, and that's okay because they're free. The reason, I'll tell you why I chose that spot. The reason I chose that spot is because you've got families that go play hockey, you've got the little brothers and sisters that are watching. Let's go get a book. You've got people that come in to play baseball, families again, let's go grab a book. Now, is there a bus stop in St. Pascal at all?
Not in the school only.
At the school only. Yeah, but see, that's just the students that already were not borrowing the books.
The public, the bus system stopped at the Ronal Lallon Community Center, which is right outside the village.
Okay, because I'm trying to hit a spot.
It's just that if you put it close to that residence, there are people in there that they're sort of hoarders, and they'll come and take your books for no reason at all. They won't do anything with them. I'm thinking it'd be more use if it was a little closer to the school.
Okay, well, the principal did recommend, well, he said that he'd have no problem if we put it on the school property. I just thought that it would be better to put it in a spot where the public go to play. But it's only a few feet over. It's only a few feet over, so, I mean, no problem there.
There's 29 in there, and I'm telling you, I support the mayor completely on that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move it then. Closer to the school. Is that good?
Yep.
And then in Clarence Creek, obviously, on this road is the best spot for it. We've got people coming from the home, we've got people at the arena, the bus stop, which I'm kind of excited about, even going to the Dipanano. So, if we put it just on the other side of the street over here, I think that would be prime location for it. What do you think?
Well, we can try it and then see if...
They are movable. It's just a piece, it's just a wood block, basically, put into the ground two feet deep. So, it's not cement or anything like that. So, we could easily, if we say, "Mm, that's not working, let's try somewhere else," we can move it.
Okay.
Yeah. Nope, I've got that. I don't even need my paperwork. They've got it all on their screen. Now, I looked in the States because there is an organization, a nonprofit organization that does this, but they were very expensive. There were $450 US plus you add on the shipping, all that, the exchange, and I'm sure there would have been some sort of duty in the timeframe. So, instead, I got a quote in town here locally, and that's $425 each. So, that's much better. It's going to save us a couple hundred dollars, and that can be in within a month. So, I just wanted to tell you all about it.
That's in your budget?
I'm going to put it in the budget. I'm going to make it fit somewhere.
Very good.
Yeah. No, no, I'm not trying to ask for money there, but I do recommend, possibly, we might eventually want to put them in at some of the other parks in the villages. Chaney doesn't have a library or anything. Perhaps it would be nice, I know the soccer's very busy there and stuff like that, so perhaps at some point, we might want to expand them and put them in more places. And we're not just going to have it community run. We're actually, my staff and myself, we're going to go in and check the books, and then we can also use the sides of it to advertise different events at the libraries as well. So, it's a nice spot.
Sorry to interrupt you. It said that we all have everything, by the way. We don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
No. So, when you say we've already seen it...
It's in the teniai, though.
Not teniai, really?
Well, I have the committee of the whole meeting minutes here.
Oh, that's great.
It's in the next meeting, that's why they don't have it in this meeting.
All right, we go to the next meeting.
We had to make an exception for you, remember?
Thank you. So, it's like 27 inches high. It's quite big and 24 wide. So, it's a nice big box with a little open door and everything.
It kind of kills there in winter.
Yeah, they withhold, they withhold, yeah. Yeah, Ottawa has them, Castleman has 14, which they've put in their parks and stuff.
14, you cover the whole village.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised when I saw 14, but...
The quarry's empty.
No comment. But no, I just wanted to let you guys know about it, and maybe it's something you want to consider. I'll keep you updated on how it's going. Maybe eventually you guys are going to say, "Hey, can you put one here as well?" We'll put another one over here.
Just make sure you coordinate with the department with the arena here, just to make sure it's not in the accessibility issues or whatever.
No, I'm going to go through all the right channels.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we're going to do is we'll also do a sort of launch of the boxes too and let everybody know about them too. It's all good.
Your next subject.
Number two, collaboratoire. We didn't actually send it in English, but I will be sending it to Marie Zemmendic tomorrow in English because we did translate it today, but didn't get it...
While we're talking about English and French, can you get the minutes, your minutes done bilingual?
Yeah, I let Helen know that they will be bilingual from now on.
I saw today, I noticed the minutes were all in English.
Yeah. It depends, it seems to depend on who's writing up the minutes. They used to be in French, then they went to English, then they went to French, then they went to English, but at no point were they ever really bilingual. So, we're going to make them bilingual. We're working on that now. Okay, so, the next situation, we're not asking for money, we're asking for a loan, which we are not adding to our annual pressures.
Don't make nice eyes to me. Make nice eyes to the young man way at the other end of the table here, called Fédéric Dignoy. He's the one that handles all the cash. The old guy next door, you don't have to...
The piggy bank? So, I just wanted to preface it with that before I explain what the project is. So, this project is the lab. We all know about the lab at the Rockland Branch. Right now, the lab is rented by the school in Conseil de Catholic. And what they do is they use it up until 3:30 every day. They don't use it all the time. Sometimes we use it as well when they're not there, but then in the evening, it rests empty pretty much most of the time. Now, the school has noted that the format is not suiting them anymore. First of all, they've got desktop computers that are out of date. They've got all the countertops, which are actually gone now. Thank you to your team. So, in coordination with the school, we're gutting the area, and we're going to build something that will actually work for us as well as for the school. They're going to be using Chromebooks. We're going to have better seating in there, better lighting. We're going to put in a projector so we can actually do family movies. We do family movies in there every Saturday, but it's on a little TV, and we have to roll stuff in every time.
And there's no sound system.
No sound system, no blinds, so sometimes on sunny days, it's hard to watch the movie. So, it's all included in that. So, what we're asking for is the funds to just be able to get it done before September because we are also going to use this room very specifically also for teens.
I have a question, I believe.
Good for teens in the library. We have a little space in the corner. I'm sure some of you have seen it. It's got a cool little couch, and we've got a PS4 there, but it's loud. The kids get loud, they get excited, they're playing video games, and sometimes we get a group of like 14, 15 of them in this little square. So, we all know, we need somewhere for the teens to go.
Does the school supply money in there?
We are currently in negotiations to find out how much they will supply. So, whatever they do supply would go towards the loan. We just had our event, the Once Upon a Time event. All of the money we raised on that is going towards the loan, and in following years, we are going to do the same thing. We're going to do the fundraisers, and then it'll go towards the loan, which is why it won't add on to the pressures. And did I discuss it with you? That'll be five years. Five years, we expect to have it all done.
I'd just like to know how we can help with this.
Actually, I'm going to ask Robin to come up because Robin's been directly dealing with the school. If you don't mind, and you can also talk about what the school had to discuss. This is Robin Babbay. She's the adult services coordinator at the library. The title, sorry. So, we have been discussing with the principal, Chantal. We've gone over the room and the needs of the school and our needs as programmers, we're two programmers at the library. So, we've identified that, yes, this space is not adequate. It's not being used because it's not meeting the needs of either parties, really. Madame Chantal has approached the conseil, and she's waiting for response. What we see as a fair arrangement is that what is fixed in the room would be covered by the library, and what is mobile, the school is going to try to get funding for that. So, tables, chairs, couches, and stuff like that. We've researched this a lot because, like, I started about two years ago, and since then, noticed the room was not being used. We have a need in the community for something for the students, for the teenagers, and it's a safe place. We see it as a win-win as well, good for the school, but for the city, I know we lack space. It's a space that's not being used, that we can utilize. There's no added cost really other than this initial renovation because there's already staff, it's already insurance for the insurance on the property. So, it's really, it's really this initial cost, and I think it will be beneficial. We see the kids outside our window all the time after school hanging around, and if they had somewhere where they could come and we could actually provide them a service that they'll use, I think it would be very beneficial.
I am completely in support of this. What I'd like to do is actually just mandate the library to discuss with Mr. Dignoy some kind of arrangement to see what is feasible and what is not, and then come back to us at another time. I don't think we'd be able to today say yes to a loan. I don't know if you've got that.
That is actually... We're hoping, the reason we're looking for September, we've, we've...
We have to do tonight if they want to go ahead.
Yeah, we've met up with many...
Okay. Sir, I just want to ask from the finance if this is possible.
Well, we'd have to determine the percentage of what has been done, and Catherine has proposed a length of five years. Were we charging ourselves interest? That's a bit the situation. Yes, we charge this back to ourselves. There would be income generated by other establishments. 20% would not be all that much. Well, I'd like zero, really.
I'm not necessarily comfortable with charging the library interest if we're already, we're supplying the funding for the library any sudden day, so...
If this is what the council wishes, well, that's fine. By giving out funds like this, we'd be losing income, we'd be losing interest income on our bank account, which is about 2%. We'd be talking about some $30,000. That would be our recommendation, 2%. But you have the opportunity to do this. Catherine proposed to reimburse with fundraising, to reimburse this loan. There would not be necessarily a budgetary impact on this.
I don't know if we really want to charge the library interest when we're only going to have to budget them in next year anyway.
Well, it's not fair if you don't charge interest since we were making interest already on this amount of money for the residents.
Whatever council assigns them. I just, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think 2% is viable, you know, and it's fine.
It's a detail, it's an investment, and this is a very... And it's not being used at all right now. And what I like is that there's windows all along between the library and the room so they can always keep an eye on what's going on. And we, they already have two adults who are scheduling programming. And you remember when we had the meetings in each villages to find out what kind of activities that they would like, and it came back many times that there was nothing for teenagers? And so, that would be one of the first activities that is provided by the city, you know, a place for them. And it can be noisy, and it's a good noisy. It's not because they, you know, they're having fun, they're exchanging, and, you know, I think it's, we should hold that. It's better to have them there than damaging the parks, you know?
Do we have an idea as to how many hours are involved? You're telling us that the school uses it? Well, at this time, well, of course, not all that much. They don't make use of it until 8:30. Well, let's say until, yes. I have access to the school's calendar, of course, and it's a funny situation because at the beginning of the year, when they visit, maybe for about two weeks, youngsters will make use of the facilities. Same rule applies for the coming weeks, for the... Well, I have access each and every day. I remember that we were told that the library was used each and every day. But as the years go by, it is made use of less and less. So before, you know, imposing another use to it, well...
A couple of rooms that are set up to be more comfortable for students. They have like the lounging chairs, the bean bags, stuff like, actually, they have those from the schools. So they have different setups like that and that's kind of what the school likes about this idea is that it gives kids a chance, they can sit on the stool. We're going to have like a little laptop bar next to the windows. They can sit on the high stools, they can sit on the couch, the folding chairs, the chairs on the side, a lot of options.
I have no problems. I know that you have the children's wellbeing at heart and Mrs. Tremblay spends a lot of time, be it with the optimists and other clubs or with other children. I think we have to go forward with something like this. A loan, if we can obtain one, why not? And I believe that, yes, of course, there's not much time left. If we have to decide something tonight, options are on the table laid before us. It's a fairly simple matter.
You're trying to get better pricing on that? Yeah, actually. There's a lot more to it than just the projector and the screen. There's modems and speakers, installation of... Pardon? Well, we'll be streaming. There's also more technical stuff like with program apps where they can make videos, music videos. It's a retract, it's basically almost the same setup as here, just a little bit more advanced. Yeah, that was the one quote that we had before we were able to come and that was from Soi Exploits. We have somebody else coming in actually on Wednesday to give us another quote on it. This was everything that we would desire to be able to move on because, you know, technology changes so fast, to be able to sort of say in five years, we're still able to keep up with everything going on. And this is what he had suggested, to be able to sort of be able to do that.
I would be okay with us proposing to approve $15,000 so you could go ahead with the construction and leave that portion out late while you try to buy better materials.
It's $26,000, yes?
No, 42, 42. Because it includes the furniture because we don't know what we're getting from the school. What our intent was, once we had, we would take the loan and then if at the end of installing all this, once we've got extra loans, hopefully that will be lower. It's just returning you what's left over.
I mean, if it's a loan, then...
And the school board would chip in too, when the school board chips in.
Once they chip in, we write you guys a check, here you go.
That's right. And also if it can be done before...
If your budget is less, you pay out that part of it.
Correct, correct. Part of the reason why we wanted to go for the full amount right now is because we want to get it done by September 1st. We need to get that done before the school starts.
Give you $15,000 to go ahead and start the construction and then you can look...
But it will take a couple of months probably to get some of these things ordered in, so we would need the funds.
I know on the university campus where I work, these, this equipment is used by students there. Each building that we designed has specific areas set aside for this particular purpose, so I have no problem with this, Mr. Mayor.
This space is at a premium at City Hall, too. This can also be used for conferences and such meetings. It will be a nice setup like that, too.
So moved and seconded, moved by Councilor Joignard, seconded by Councilor Leonard. Moved, well, that we contract a loan at a rate of 2% based upon a $42,000 amount for a five-year period at an interest rate pegged at 2%. Reimbursement would be insured by the school board and fundraising activities. A five-year loan then? Yes, yes. When you're stating contracting a loan, do we not have reserves set aside for this? We'll look into that, yes. All those in favor, carried? Yes, fine. I might have another question. Fine. Well, I believe it might create some other budgetary pressures in other areas. Well, that's, we'll look into that. Question period. If you have any questions for Town Council, please step forward, give us your name and your address and go ahead. Good morning. My name is Gilles Preso, 3395 Cercle de Côte in Rockland. Good morning, or good evening, should I say, Mr. Mayor, and council members. Now, on the 31st of January 2018, there was a water main break and the Ontario Water Resources Commission representatives showed up to close down water supply and they condemned the hydrant located in between myself and my neighbor. On the 1st of the February, I had occasion to meet with Denis Lompré, who assessed the damages and he stated that nothing can be done prior to the spring thaw. Now, on the same day, I wrote him a letter regarding our discussion. Now, on the 8th of February, he answered my letter and he stated that he discussed the extent of damages caused by the water breakage will be addressed by the city of Rockland. Now, on the 21st of February, there was a second water main breakage. There was a hole in the asphalt, 18 inches deep, and I contacted again Mr. Lompré. They sent some workers over and they repaired the situation temporarily. On the 12th of March, I had occasion to meet or contact the city of Clarence in Rockland as well as the Ontario Water Resources Commission and they came back again to take a look at the situation. They tried to close the valve again and it broke. Once again, I incurred water damage on my property and my entranceway. And they dug that area for a third time in a short span of time. You have pictures of work that was made. Yes, we have a good description here of the photos. On the 22nd of April, I wrote a letter to Jean-Marc Lallon to explain the situation. He answered back that he'll consult Town Hall on this. On the 10th of April, I phoned Mr. Philippe Corbier. He assessed the damages and he stated that he took care of them. On the 23rd of April, I phoned Mr. Jean-Marc Lallon again and told him that I had no news and he said, well, I'll consult Town Hall again. On the 15th of May, I phoned Mr. Corbier and he told me that this situation be corrected in between mid-June and mid-July. This situation has persisted for the past four and a half months and I've been waiting for things to be corrected. On the 22nd, oh, last month I contacted Town Hall, I contacted Mr. Lallon again, he contacted the intern folks from the Town Hall. From Town Hall, on the 13th of June, I consulted with Julien Lallon at his office. I explained to him my dilemma, he told me what steps to follow, and my patience has been exhausted after four and a half months. I do have questions, Mr. Mayor. I would like to know when corrective works will be done and I'd like to obtain an answer as to my answer and I'd like to be warned in advance when landscaping companies will come over to take a look at the situation and come up with a price to correct the situation because I will be making them aware as to where the water leaked. It seeped or leaked close to 10 feet from my garage door. The water actually flowed past the lamp post that is erected there or close by. Fine. So I'd like to obtain an answer, Mr. Mayor, as to whether or not I can address the situation with the workers when they'll show up there and take care of the situation. Councilor Leonard? Well, I'm going to wait upon Mr. Leonard's recommendation, but I can tell you that I was really, well, disappointed by the service that we received. Since, the work has not been done since January and last Saturday I came back to take pictures. There were pylons around there that were still there. There are two depressions in the roadway, there's a hole right beside the manhole that was never repaired. Now, spring thaw has come and gone unless they're waiting for next year's spring thaw. In any event, Mr. Mayor, I'm far from being satisfied from the steps undertaken. I've had occasion to meet with Mr. Leonard on many occasions and I met with Mr. Lontey prior to this and the new individual that replaced Mr. Lontey and nothing's been going on and I'm wondering what's going on here. Now, this situation has been ongoing for the past five months in a residential area. I know that we like to put up cones here, there and everywhere throughout Rockland, but it's high time that we pick them up. We're getting even worse than Montreal right now. Mr. Lard, do you have any answer to this situation? Mr. Mayor, the only thing I can answer is this. Given what's been happening, I was told that we were, folks were waiting until spring thaw had come and gone. This is an area in which there were a lot of problems and even if spring thaw has come and gone, the ground is saturated still. We have to also repair, bear in mind, Mr. Mayor, the pipe there. It is very late in the season. It is now very late in the season. We're waiting for the contractors to show up, but when will we repair the water main? What Mr. Corbier stated, we thought we'd do this mid-June, maybe next week. So we'll be able to fix the landscaping also with you. Everybody's seen the pictures, of course, because of all of the damages that did occur. We'll have to repair the area. Well, last week I attended this property. I asked you to attend the property, you didn't have time to show up and you told me that you'd send Mr. Yves Roussel over, but he never showed up. Not only this gentleman's impacted, but his neighbor's impacted because the water pressure raised the level of the surrounding ground here and I figured that five months is quite a long time to repair the breakage. Well, we addressed health and safety concerns also in that area. We figured we'd send Mr. Roussel over, but he did not take care of the works. He was looking at the health and safety aspects. He sent over Bernard to look at this specific situation and he performed an inspection and figured that it was not a dangerous situation, as situations go. Well, we figured we'd, work would start next week? Yes, I'd have to consult Philippe to determine the exact date. Councilor Zandt? What bothers me or concerns me, Mr. Leonard, with regards to this situation is that it seems that our priorities... Well, I have a great deal of difficulty in understanding the system, the priority system that was set up. This is not a concern directed towards you, but towards folks in your department. How many times does a situation, does someone have to complain before he receives an answer from the city of Clarence in Rockland to state, well, you know, the situation will be corrected within such and such a timeframe? You know, every time that Councilor Leonard or myself has to revisit the initial complaint on many occasions before it is, before situations are corrected. We need to follow up on situations, not four months later, but as situations come up. It would have taken two minutes for someone to pick up the phone and phone this gentleman and say, listen, we haven't forgotten your situation, we haven't forgotten you, we're waiting upon B, A, B and C to be done and then we'll give you a call back. There's not, there are no follow-ups. I'm not saying that because you're involved in this, but the onus is not upon a situation to, not, the onus is not upon taxpayers to request that updates be given to him or her. The onus is upon town administration to do this. I'd like to ensure that a plan be implemented to take care of this gentleman's situation and all other situations of our ratepayers that wind up in such a dilemma. I know that the infrastructure department is the subject of complaints, similar to this one here, but we really have to, especially in this case, you know, there were problems encountered with the street, with the water main or the piping. Someone has to take charge of this particular, of a particular situation and coordinates properly with the department that is concerned with similar situations or certain situations, that depart, certain departments are concerned with certain situations because it's sort of like a pass the buck situation type thing that prevails, you know. Well, who's in charge of this particular project, by the way? Well, as things stand right now, Mr. Corbier is in charge. Mr. Corbier, we've encountered problem, problems with, for quite a while. Mr. Kehoe, I'd raise this situation or this dilemma with me each and every time that we receive a complaint by a ratepayer that we should implement a filing system such as emergency services have so that the complaint is documented. It removes pressure from Mr. Leonard's and Mr. Corbier's shoulders. If an individual has a call to make, he makes this call to his elected representative and the situation is resolved. If we implement a system where a complaint is numbered and documented and taken care of, then everything would be just fine. We'd have a resource person that would manage matters. What happens also is that you spoke to Mr. Lompré. Mr. Lompré, Mr. Lompré is now off on sick leave. Mr. Corbier has taken over from him. All of Mr. Lompré's matters would have been assigned to another individual if we'd had a proper filing system in place and we're passing the buck along to... Let me direct my question. Mr. Kehoe, is there something that's going to be implemented with regards to dealing with complaints?
We have a system in place right now. It's, it's being used by certain departments and I'm sure Mr. Leonard's staff are using it. We are also reviewing another system for other purposes other than taking calls. And that's a SharePoint system that we talked about budget, which will be a very evasive, powerful system, but we are looking at our existing call system and again, Mr. Leonard, the software is WorkTech that we do have right now that is being used and whether it's being used to its, to its potential and whether SharePoint can take over some of the functionality we are reviewing this.
So was a file created for this gentleman's situation?
I believe so, I think so.
It might be worth our while, Mr. Corbier, to go ahead with this and to implement this particular system we're talking about so that we can, you know, tackle those situations as they come up and they're reported to us by our ratepayers. There's another matter that has not been taken care of in Clarence Creek. Well, Mr. Mayor, in this particular, let's have Mr. Leonard answer this.
We'll have to review our procedures and we'll just make sure that situations like these are addressed.
I think it's possible to have a main file and whoever deals with that file...
Notwithstanding, we should have a file open. We all have accesses, electronic access to a central filing system and if, Mr. Leonard, you have a communication with this gentleman, you just input the data. If someone else wants to figure out what's going on with this particular matter, he can tap into this electronic file and knows what's being done. You'd have dates and, you know, actions that were taken to correct this situation. You would have one individual responsible for a particular matter. Everything would be documented each and every time we do something, whatever that action is, everything would be documented, everything would be, there would be easier to follow up with what needs to be done. It's easier to share documents amongst Google users, for example. Well, we assume that Mr. Leonard's department makes use of a system. Mr. Leonard, do you make use of a system? If yes, why did this break down? I just want to know. Well, we have a work order system, basically. It's a system that's been implemented to deal with work orders. I don't think what Councilor Grimal is suggesting would... I don't think what Counselor Grimal is suggesting would, would satisfy him, given the situation we have right, or given the, the system we have in place right now, but we, we're not dealing with work orders here, but with procedures that need to be reviewed in given situations. So we have to deal with those quickly and aggressively. From a communication standpoint, of course, what you're, you know, it would be worthwhile to implement such a system. Of course, we should contact ratepayers to give them a heads-up as to what's happening in zone of two, every two weeks. I still have two questions left, Mr. Mayor. Which guarantees shall I have within a year if similar defects reappear again? Well, we'll have to start up this, this, these steps again. Well, are you expecting me to make use of a lawyer's services? I think it would save time to everyone if, Mr., look, I think everybody would, would save if we were to proceed without making use of a lawyer, without, just phone me up at the office each and every morning. We'll take care of this situation, certainly. If you take a look at the photograph that was taken here, they spread down a truckload of dust on interlock which broke in turn, which broke up. And if interlock is, does broke up, does break up, then it gives rise to very difficult situations. Well, look, were, you told that they dump all of this dust on the interlock there? Yes, I was okay with this. Yes, they did so. And I told this individual, if you told me that this dust will not break up anything, that's fine with me, but it did break up something. Another thing also, there's a lady on our street about, well, let's say, three weeks ago, there's a Clarence and Rockland town truck went down. She complained that her entranceway was lower than the level of the street. The guy came down, measured and drew up some yellow lines and he repaired the situation. I've been waiting to have my situation taken care of for the past four and a half months. As Mr. Leonard told you, the work would start this month. There was individual that was satisfied, that came out satisfied with all, in all of this. I'm not talking about Jean-Marc, but Mr. Lomperay satisfied my, answered my queries, but the other people I dealt with at the town of Clarence and Rockland, nobody else took care of this situation. But Mr. Cormier is playing catch-up right now, but make sure, rest assured that we'll start up work here. And thank you, Counsel LeLondre, thank you, Counsel Zant. Do you want your foot, pictures back, by the way, sir? Do you want your pictures back, pictures you've taken? That's fine. Fine. All right, let's keep those pictures on file. Fine, then. Are there any individuals that wish to address council? Your name and address, please.
My name is Renee Foebert. I live on 2349 Clark Road. Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, ladies. I won't tie you up, I'm sure you're aware of the road problems we have on Clark Road and the ditches. Everything that they said, we have the exact same problem, so I'm not even going to go there. I know it takes time and we're aware that on our street it takes money. So we're like everybody else, we'll wait. The only thing I'm really concerned with is, we have ditches, it's four of us and there's a ditch on east side of the road and the water is not going anywhere. It's constantly staying and rising. It's actually getting wider. It can't go anywhere because it's getting so deep, it just goes deeper. The ground where the ditch goes, has to go out, is higher now, so the water can't go up and there's trees like this and ditch. So any way you can just, even if that's the only thing you fix this year, we would be happy with that.
So Leonard, can we check on that, on Clark Road?
Yes, it's a report, that's good.
Okay. Is that one situation, let's say? I know it's in the report for a while. Is it in this?
I know, sorry, sorry, not regularly.
Regular, okay.
Sorry, sir, what's your address?
2349 Clark. And I've had the city out there twice to look at.
Oh, so they've already went?
And yes, and I've talked to one of the gentlemen about it. He agreed, yes, I see there is a problem there. And I don't think that...
Yeah, it is, there is a problem.
I was there on Friday to look at the road. There's 28 houses on the road and they spread the liquid calcium on the road and on top, I agree with you, the water stays on it. There's no ditches. That's nearly to the end though.
And we would be happy for now if you could just, on both sides of the road, just where the four houses are, if we can get the water to move down, we would be happy there. We can put up with the rest for now because that's the way it is, right?
Yep.
We'd really appreciate it if you could help us out because we are...
There's a report before council this week.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Can we deal with this before the project gets started? Is that, is that what we agree on? And now we can wait for the report? If this waits until September or October to be done, he's still going to be starting?
It's in the reg...
I know, but between the time we vote, Mr. Mayor, and the time that he gets the survey, I just want to know the time, especially we're going to have... Is the last water there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's not something we can address at one property, it's the entire length of the road that needs to have ditches.
So you can't do anything to remove the water that's in one week before you start the work?
You're just going to lower the ditch and the water's going to stay there because you need to excavate the length of the road and then they have to provide outlets and that's, that's the report that's to consider.
The ditch basically just starts at our place and it doesn't go up the hill, so it's staying right there and just, it won't go anywhere. Because we have the bush behind us, it's coming in between the two houses and flows into your ditch. Yeah, that's our problem. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you then. Service contract also? Yes, that's the next item. We discussed this at length previous to this. Consent items, any items you'd like to remove? 10.3 sub F, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to remove this from our list of consent items so we may enter into a discussion dealing with a particular aspect of that issue. Any other things? Fine. Counsel Levaire, would you care to read the consent items that need to be approved? Yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. If you want me to, I will. I know you're good at that.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir. Be resolved of the following items as listed under consent items appearing on the regular meeting of town council agenda of June the 18th, 2018 be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Regular meeting of June the 4th, 2018 and committee of the whole meeting of June the 4th, 2018. Also receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Heritage Advisory Committee, January 23rd, 2018. Heritage Advisory Committee, April the 3rd, 2018. Planning Committee of April the 5th, 2018. Planning Committee Meeting of May the 2nd, 2018. Minutes of the Public Library Board Meeting of March the 20th, 2018. Approval of the Minutes of the Public Library Board Meeting of May the 15th, 2018. Items under 10.3, the following recommendations of Committee of the Hall of June the 4th, 2018. Resolution to approve the purchase and installation of a Level 2 charging station for City Hall and resolution to approve the evaluation process for heritage sign requests. Item C, resolution to approve the engineering guidelines. Item D, resolutions to acknowledge receipt of the site plan control area by law and site plan process guide. Item E, resolution to approve that a professional engineer's report be completed to provide the necessary steps to remove the lead paint from the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena. 10.4, adoption of the salaries paid from May the 6th, 2018 to June the 2nd, 2018 in the gross amount of $991,196.59 and net amount of $725,278.31. Seconded by Counsel Zant, all those in favor? There's one item that I would have liked that we remove from the list, item 10.3. You can still remove it for discussion. I also had another item, Mr. Mayor, well, as far, as long as we're into reviewing items. Well, all those in favor of what has been read, save and accept sub A and sub F. Counselor Grimal, go ahead. You're the first one to have sought that we review this. Whereas council has retained consultants to determine whether savings can be realized by making use of our resources and whereas capital expenditure programs making use of criteria to hire external consultants be resolved, that we appoint consultants to review capital expenditure projects that have been approved as well as studies therein. Counsel Zant? Well, the question that I do have deals with what the contents of page four that states that we should come up with RSPs, the report has been drawn up in English, but my question is directed to standing offer agreement. That gives us an idea of where we stand, but it doesn't give us an idea as to when it will be done and what needs to be done when we're dealing with standing offers. We're dealing with four companies that are quite strong in different areas, but they would not have to resort to council approval to implement, to take a decision. What, Mr. Leonard? Well, the new mechanism is already in place to deal with standing offers at present. We're dealing with four different categories. What we're suggesting is to increase service categories concerning standing offers because things are quite limited as things stand right now and potentially reviewing the amount has been pre-approved, $50,000 amount, to increase it so that, as you mentioned, we would have to come back to council each and every time we need to do this. Well, when will different disciplines be added onto the list? I just want to avoid this being dealt with by council on a regular basis and this in turn, of course, will accelerate ongoing work.
We don't have a timeframe idea, ballpark.
It is a project that is, that will be done in phases. So one section is less than $50,000, but the whole project as a whole is more than $50,000. What do you do then? If you go, tender, go tender, by sections, do you go with the $50,000 or do you look at the whole?
Mr. Bear, when we're purchasing, we look at every contract individually. So it's if the contract itself is under $50,000 or over $50,000.
Okay, so because if it's one project with seven contracts, if you do it in phases, it would be that if it's $50,000, phase one, then you would apply.
All right then. Counsel Levaire? Resolution to approve a professional engineer's report to be completed to implement the necessary steps to remove the lead paint at the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena. Hold on a minute. Can we not move and second at all, three be adopted together? Well, no, we have to do it separately. Sir, moved by Counsel Grimal, seconded by Counsel LeLondre, all those in favor? Carry then, continue on, Counsel Levaire. We need someone to second this particular resolution. Oh, come on now, you're bugging us down. No, he was going to ask a question. I read it, I've already read the resolution. You need this resolution to be seconded. Well, there you go. Mr. Grimal has just seconded your resolution. Continue on, Counsel Levaire. Well, I don't know why we need to resort to engineer's report each and every time I Googled steps to be taken to remove lead paint. Steps are outlined quite clearly on the internet. If I have a problem in my own building, I can call up a company and they take a look at the situation. We don't need engineer's report to deal with this. This is not the first time that people have removed lead paint from a given building. Why do we have to spend money on engineer's report or being told that things drag on concerning Jean-Marc Lallonde, the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena? And I'm wondering why we need a report again? Mr. Jumiv, do you have an answer to that? Well, Mr. Mayor, of course, this is a government of Ontario issue. We're dealing with hazardous waste here, so we need to follow specific steps when we're, especially when we're dealing with people in the commercial world, of course, we have to follow certain guidelines, you know, and when we're dealing with, with matters that impact directly the commercial area, we have to take a close look at health and safety issues, a more judicious and extensive look. So we have to adhere to all steps that are prescribed. Just to reassure, reassure members of council, we called upon Ministry of Health employees to consult with us so that we can come up to solutions that might circumvent the need of resorting to engineers, but we still have to proceed with the steps already laid out before us to correct the situation. If I take, for example, either residential or commercial situation and if, within a few hours, let's say, let's take an oil spill as an example, that within a few hours professionals show up to take care of the situation. Why do we need engineers when we have specialized companies that deal with oil-related problems, paint-related problems, you know? Well, with regards to designated substances, of course, the company, people will show up, but the companies need to resort to an engineer's services and the company will invoice its services taking this into account. I believe, I, I see. Counsel Zant? The employees will not be doing the work, but a company that has been hired to do this work, that's right. So this company knows how to remove lead paint, of course, because they're, it's an expert, this company, in removing lead paint. If an engineer is hired, he'll be just standing there, taking a look at the work being done. We did this at the federal government level. We hired a firm and then we hired another firm to supervise the firm that was designated to do, perform the initial work. You know, we're, what's happening right now is that there are people making use of the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena at the very time that we're right here and now and we have to perform specific work to ensure that people are working in a safe and healthy environment. We have to ensure that companies do the work within the standards that are prescribed and if situation arises in the future where somebody becomes ill because of outshoots of work has been performed, we have to protect ourselves. This is what happens. But these companies are certified, I know, but as Mr. Jumiv has stated, you'll have to pay an engineer services one way or another. Either you're going to pay through an invoicing system, you know, Mr. Levaire, we have to follow procedures. Well, the engineer's plan that we're alluding to, is that the engineer stemming from the same company that hires the people that will remove the lead paint? Counsel, or Mr. Jumiv, well, the workers that will be removing the lead paint working with, in the same company that, or working at the same company that the engineer comes from? Well, when we're dealing, let's say, with a construction project, we have to hire supervisors to ensure that work has been properly done. Of course, if we leave this in a company's hands, for example, that has been hired to remove lead paint, they will hire their own engineering consultant. You see what I mean? So we have to be neutral. So this is a way to ensure that the supervisory work done is done free and clear of any conflicts of interest. That's right. Counsel LeLondre? We were dealing with a consultant firm that was attached to this matter. I was, I was going to obtain paint samples and forward them to National Research Council, they would determine whether or not the lead content goes over and beyond the standards prescribed. Counsel, or Mr. Jumiv, should I say? We've already done this and the result of the lead analysis does now appear in the report. Well, the consultant firm came up with a .05 content? Well, the rate varies. It, it is calculated in proportion to a parts per million ratio. So they'll be supervising the work also? Yes, technically, again, we think we've, we... We think we have come up with a situation that will not prevent us from removing the lead point, but coming up at least with a temporary stopgap measure before the situation has been normalized. So we've come up with the implementation of a temporary situation. But if I don't have a recommendation, a positive recommendation from the ministry, well, why don't we perform the work on a permanence basis right now? Well, hopefully, we'll, we can perform the work that's needed tapping into our existing resources within town council, within the municipality of Clarnes and Rockland. All those in favor then? Carry. Let's go on now to sub A, resolution to approve the purchase and installation of a level two charging station for City Hall. Yes, Mr. Mayor, be it resolved that town council approves the purchase and installation of a charging station, a level two charging station in two locations as approved by the Infrastructure and Land Planning Department. And be it also resolved that council authorizes the transfer of two thousand seven hundred dollars from the Building Reserve Fund for 2018 operations so that we can pay for the costs of the purchase installation of one charging station for vehicles. We initially stated two charging stations and now we're stating one. Well, we're referring to a level two charging station. We're talking about the purchase of one charging station, level two. Well, a level two charging station to be located in two areas. We haven't determined what specific locations we'll be dealing with here. Well, we were talking about the church and another location. Mr. Jumayev, should we leave this in your able hands? Well, Mr. Mayor, we talked about a location close by the church on Laurier Street. The church, of course, is certainly a promising venue. Mr. Mayor, we discussed this the last time around. I was asked to take a look at the church area. I consulted with the church authorities. They're ready to have a charging station be installed there. Well, this is not what Mr. Leonard has stated. Well, I think we'll have town administration take care of this, right? Well, Mr. Mayor, the fact remains that location certainly met our requirements. Counselor Lallon met with the church authorities to make sure that everything was okay with them, but we have to also perform the necessary inspections to clear the way so that charging stations can be properly installed there. I'd like to make a comment on this. One charging station will cost us two thousand and seven hundred dollars. If we're talking about two charging stations, we're talking about five thousand, four hundred dollars. Are we talking about pre approving two particular locations? No, really, we're talking about approving one location there. There's already one charging station, this would be a second charging station added. So be it resolved that council approves the purchase installation of one charging station. The resolution states two charging stations. No, we're talking about one level two charging station at two different locations. No, we're talking about one particular location. So we're talking about two charging stations being installed? Look, look, folks, the resolution states, what does the resolution state, really? We're talking about two charging stations.
Mr. Leonard, could you please clarify the situation? We're talking about one charging station at one location to be installed. So we'll have to change the resolution as it reads from two to one location. So we'll have, yes, that's fine. I believe that one car can be charged at this charging station. Mrs. Leonard, will you please modify the resolution? Thank you. All those in favor, carry then. Well, thank you. Committees, reports, accounts paid. Counselor Guirima.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just read the following. Be it resolved that the accounts pay from the period twelfth of May to the eighth of June in the amount of one million four hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-four cents be adopted as recommended, seconded by Counselor Zant. Any questions? All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Eleven point two, extend service contract for Dave Darch. That was discussed, but you do have resolutions to be adopted, however. We have the recommendation and there's something that was added on. Yes, the weekly stipend to be paid. Counselor Zant, do you want me to read the first resolution and then go on to the second one? Well, no, let's deal with the initial recommendation. Yes, fine. Whereas Mr. Dave Darch's engineering expertise is still required by the municipality, be it resolved that his contract be extended for two days a week until the end of November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Fine, seconded by Counselor Joignan. Joignan, any questions? All those in favor, carry then. Amendment to the dog bylaw. Counselor Levert.
Yes, hold on, Mr. Mayor. Let me come up with it. Go ahead, well, go ahead, Counselor Joignan. Be it resolved that council consider the adoption of an amendment to the current dog bylaw at its next regular meeting in order to allow three dogs per household plus any service dog that may be clinically assigned to a person living in that household and to allow five service dogs in training and further allowing rescue center to has up to twenty dogs in its care as the dogs transition to new homes. Seconded by Counselor Zant, questions? Counselor Belleguet. I believe that's exactly the same resolution that we tackled at the previous meeting. Nothing has changed. Mr. Levert, no, nothing has changed as things stand. Look, the bylaw is not perfect by any means, but certainly it would compel people that don't follow the standards set out to at least comply. I'm expecting that by the fall, I'll come up with a new bylaw whereby the new bylaw addresses specific sections dealing with people that train rescue dogs to follow certain standards. I'm dealing with a particular case at present. So I'm trying to get these people involved to respect, to adhere to standards issued by the government. It's just a matter of adding something that will impact people that train rescue dogs and regulate training centers also. Well, this is an amendment to the bylaw. We already have an existing bylaw. If we are to modify the existing bylaw as requested last time around, well, we need a bit more clarification concerning definitions contained in the bylaw. What do we need clarifications? Well, the proper definition of what we understand by what a residence is and what space is allocated to individual dogs. Well, I spoke to Mr. Levert, because I'm dealing with this department. What I'm trying to do is to have people follow regulations that are set out. They have to properly research the matter. We could come up with something quite quickly, but we have to take a look at things in depth. Given the bylaw that we would implement tonight, it would not, well, it would actually offer coverage to those people that are dealing with this right now to deter, you know, to come up with proper definitions, proper definitions as to the size that can be adopted by kennel or that can, that can impact a kennel and where a kennel can be located, whether in an urban or in a rural environment. We need to modify the bylaw, but it requires of us that we perform the necessary research. One thing stands for sure is that if people circumvent the bylaw, it means that, well, you know, if a lot of people circumvent the bylaw, then it does mean that the bylaw does not correspond to the reality as it stands right now. My sole concern is that when we're going to implement the changes, will these people impacted by the changes, will these people stand ready to implement the said changes imposed upon them? If we reduce the number of service dogs, it might give rise to certain number of problems unless we allow them sometime to adapt themselves. If there are many people that don't meet the regulations set out, I think it would allow us to allow them time to adapt. Counselor Zant. I'm in agreement with what my colleagues state here, but I'd like to know what the timeline is. I don't want to point the finger because I know that everybody is kept busy by other matters, but we've been waiting, let's say, for the past year to implement a new parking bylaw. We still haven't gotten it yet, but Mr. Bel-
I'm entirely in agreement with that. Your timeline for that, for the research, I know your department is occupied, but I'd like to know, we're thinking six months, a year, two years?
I'm saying at the end of the year, we should have something more concrete. It's sure, we're saying a lot of definitions, there's no regulation at this moment that has a certain, it takes a certain core to have a certain, that exists. It's false.
But are you sure that you have verified with an instant?
Yeah, it's sure, and what happens to the animals, medical, that's just animals that after, what can I comprehend, it's really, if you have a doctor, really, a person would have, I think, ten children, and you couldn't argue that you didn't do anything, even if they're doctors, it's really a big area, it's everywhere, and there are changes, amendments in the regulations, probably in the next six months, maximum, it's really, it's just advancing, you can turn the page, and then-
Actually, there are a lot of chickens that exist. And then, there's one at Amun, I know, there's one at Borget, there's one on baseline, and these guys, pardon?
On the far east.
But it's not a chicken. But they have guitars, provincial guitars, and we're seeing here, there's a lot of chickens that have lost their way. There's nothing worse than having a chicken lost. As I said yesterday, there's one on the other side of the street, I'm going to, with our regulations, we're going to keep, we're going to keep up to twenty eight chickens. There's no person that can run that far.
There are some regulations, there are some municipal and provincial regulations for the chickens, and that's the responsibility.
Actually, you can't do that.
I think there's no problem with that. Those who have chickens respond to the criteria. There's no person who can open a chicken in the village, you can't have twenty chickens at home.
But according to the regulations, yes.
No, the chickens, the chickens, for being a chicken, you can't have a chicken in the middle.
But it's not a chicken, it's a chicken. The chickens are dead, it's not legal.
What's the law? Rescue.
The regulations, the-
The law, there's not a chicken, there's not a rescue.
We have to rescue.
We have to rescue.
If you have a house with a little girl in the backyard-
It would be, it would be a designated specific, because what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is that there, instead of going, going to find three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine regulations, we're trying to repay them. So it's-
It's something we can arrange.
It's something we can arrange, but it's-
Like, come here, you're capable of letting someone have twenty chickens in the house?
Yeah, we can let anyone have twenty chickens in the house.
It's a center of operation, it's not a private house, it's written in the book. A center of operation of sabotage. I can't have a center of operation of sabotage, I have to have a permit.
You have to have a zoneage.
Have to have a zoneage, that's it. We can't have a center in the village, if they do that, it's illegal.
A lot of things, we're not like, that's a designated-
Is it possible, when you integrate the information of other regulations, that you put in parentheses, where this, to make a link, so that if they have too many details, they can go and see this one?
Yeah, probably, I would, I would, I would make it a little user friendly.
Yes, that's-
There's a link that will open up another regulation, where it's been cleared, that's-
And even if it's possible, at least have it written, yes, that's-
You could go and find the research.
Yes, that's- And also, for us, we know, when we make decisions, we know how many, how many regulations.
Okay. All that I want is that this resolution, the amendment, is it possible to add, because there's a definition that doesn't exist in the current regulation, a definition that a center of sabotage is, must be, the definition, it has to be secured in a rural area. Is it possible to add that? It's just the definition, because we have to have twenty chickens in this class, to define what it is. Is it possible to add that?
But someone can't determine it by himself, okay, I open a center, my house is made a center of-
It's not a designated.
But we don't have that in the regulations, that's what I'm saying. You say they don't have the right, because they have the right to do that, but the regulations there, they don't address it.
We can stop them, Mr. Levert, you know.
Yes, because it's only the centers that have the right to do that, but if they can't prove they don't have the papers, like, they're recognized as a-
It's written in the regulations, why would we don't do that?
Yes, but if it's in the schedule, it's not urgent to have the definition, in my opinion.
The town is designated.
Absolutely.
I'm entirely in agreement.
Just saying that it's designated, maybe you just need to add that in the next, when it's a day.
It's like a section of trainer designated, I would like to add a definition for that, that it doesn't matter, it would be necessary to have a license of business, with all his information and associations he's associated with, so that it's the most legitimate possible. It's all at the same level, but it's the trend everywhere, because there are a lot of municipalities that are trying to amend it, to try to add some things there.
It makes less pain for you to have a client, what do I need, what do I do, what's the best?
Exactly, it's trying to have the most control possible, in terms of what we can do with these restrictions, but it's going to be a working project, working progress.
With that resolution, that gives you ammunition to put that in force.
I propose, Mr. Mark, that it be added, so that our bureau can reject-
Yes, but it will take six months to arrange everything. Like, that gives you ammunition to put what they're doing in order.
But with that, a person could come tomorrow and bring twenty chickens in.
No, no, no. The problem is, at the moment, if we don't adopt that to make it legal, it will have to be done, a lot of them don't meet the criteria, because they'll meet the criteria, and after that, it gives them time to organize the regulations, to be really adaptable, to have, what are the requirements, how the other regulations affect the regulations that we need to inspect.
So if we do that, a person can't come to the party that has twenty-
No, no. They have to-
There's a zoneage.
Yes, that's-
There's all the legislation that's needed.
I understand your point, Mr. Mark, it's that, the interpretation of that, there are people who are, hey, they're in danger, they're supposed to pass it, the council has passed the regulations, we're going to have twenty chickens in the house.
You're going to have a permit, man.
No, 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 I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, they've decided to save the animals, they've started that, they're trying to-
They have to have a license.
They don't have a license.
That would be-
No, we've just fixed the limit, they're like, hey, I can, you know, why, why, why do we have to, I understand, I understand, I understand, medical, medical, let the limit be, let's, let's, let's-
With that, you have the ammunition to put that in charge.
The twenty chickens, I don't understand.
Yes, but the person that you say that's not legal-
I demand a vote.
Come on, come on, come on, come on. Come on, come on, come on.
I demand a vote. Who's in the room? Thank you. Station. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Page two, the three limited, part of the law, twenty-six and twenty-seven concessions, one, old survey, part of the law, twenty-five concessions, two, old survey, part of the law, six, seven concessions, eight. Mr. Guirima.
Attending to the regulations, the regulations, the official regulations are necessary to complete the conditions of approval of the budget for the planning of the settlement, approved by the municipal council, the fourth of August, two thousand and eighteen, for the development of the stage five of the village, which is resolved, the municipal council adopts the regulations, two thousand and eighteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Adopt the regulations, two thousand and eighteen. Adopte le règlement 2018-83, amendement numéro 10 au plan officiel de l'art urbaine de la cité de Clarence Rocklin afin de changer la désignation de résidentiel à faible densité à résidentiel à moyenne densité et commerce des services pour certaines parties du terrain décrit comme étant une partie du lot 26-27 concession 1, OS, partie du lot 25 concession 2 OS et partie du lot CD concession 8, afin que, afin d'ajouter la politique 5.6.3.6 tel que recommandée par le département d'infrastructure et aménagement du territoire et qu'il soit résolu que le Conseil municipal adopte le règlement 2018-82, modifiant le règlement de zonage 2016-10 afin de changer la catégorie de zonage de zone résidentielle urbaine de densité 1 général, aménagement différé R1H, à zone résidentielle urbaine de densité 1 spéciale exemption 2 R1S-2, zone résidentielle urbaine de densité 3 exception 11 R3-11, zone résidentielle urbaine de densité 3 exception 14 R3-14, zone commerciale générale exception 8 CG-8, les zones de parc et espace vert OS pour le terrain décrit comme étant une partie des lots 26 et 27 concession 1 OS, partie du lot 25 concession 2 OS et partie des lots CD concession 8 tel que recommandé par le département d'infrastructure et aménagement du territoire.
Secondé, Monsieur Zan? Une question?
C'est quoi ça s'appelle?
Je pense bien bad, monsieur Lerard. Ma question, monsieur Lala, je sais que on avait discuté certaines choses de ce plan-là, considérant le chemin à toute connexion à Quadsor présentement. Je veux juste faire sûr qu'une fois que l'étude de trafic soit soumise, que si on a des questions, qu'on va pas t'être dit, ah, il est trop tard là, on a déjà passé tout puis... Parce que moi, à chaque fois qu'on a des questions, on est aujourd'hui, attends au plan du trafic, attends à, pas le plan du trafic, pardon, à... À l'étude de trafic, pardon. Je veux juste faire sûr que si on a encore des questions, on va être capables de demander même si on passe ceci ce soir.
Faire approuver l'étude, Monsieur Lala.
Ben d'habitude, des fois, monsieur Maire, ça l'arrive, ça passe un peu le terrain. Ça ici, c'est vraiment, c'est qu'est-ce qui arrive? C'est que ça aurait pu être fait quand ils ont fait le processus du, excuse-moi, du draft plan. Il aurait pu avoir fait ça là. Souvent, ils font ce processus-là en même temps, ils ont choisi d'essayer de pas le faire. Donc question de changement de zonage puis question de changement de, du plan officiel. Donc ça aurait été fait au même stage, dans nos projets, c'est fait au même stage que le draft plan. Donc ça a rien changé depuis cette étude, depuis ce stage-là. C'est juste le zonage, ça revient encore à la question de, une fois qu'on va faire l'étude, on pourra savoir plus le branchement de la rue. Et on va être capables de faire, de proposer des changements? Ouais, approuver ça ici, ça a pas l'impact. C'est bon, je voulais juste faire sûr.
Même si ça par rapport dans les plans ici là, on parlait d'un, ce qu'on appelle un runabout juste au, en bas de la cour de rue Saint-Jacques. Il va être là aussi par rapport des plans.
Ouais, encore là, c'est ça, ça refait, c'est tout sujet à l'étude de trafic, on pourra étudier les...
Tout le monde a papa? Merci. Madame Schwanier, 11 point 5. Amendement à l'ébauche, le plan de lotissement, le règlement de zonage Brégil suite à la méthode, le règlement de...
Dû que le Conseil municipal sous forme de résolution a adopté une série de 92 conditions relatives au projet de lotissement du développement de Brégil le 17 avril 2018 et attendu que le Conseil municipal a également adopté un amendement au plan officiel de l'art urbaine ainsi qu'un amendement au règlement de zonage et attendu que, qu'un appel a été reçu au tribunal d'appel de l'aménagement local concernant les trois dossiers ci mentionnés et attendu que le Conseil a recommandé d'entreprendre les démarches afin de résoudre des différends sous l'article 34 20.1 de la loi sur l'aménagement du territoire et attendu que la mélisation a été planifiée pour le 6 juin 2018 afin de résoudre des différends et attendu qu'une entente entre toutes les parties a été conclue et un nouveau règlement de zonage devrait être adopté ainsi que l'ajout de deux nouvelles conditions à l'ébauche de plan de lotissement. Qu'il soit résolu que le Conseil municipal approuve l'ajout de deux conditions stipulées à la section 5 au rapport aménagement 1853A pour l'ébauche du plan de lotissement soumis par Atrell Engineering pour 3 2 2 3 7 0 1 Canada Inc., Brégil, dossier numéro D-12-121 et qu'il soit résolu que le Conseil adopte le règlement numéro 2018-80 concernant un amendement au règlement de zonage 2016-10 dans le but de modifier la catégorie de zonage de la propriété de zone résidentielle urbaine de densité 1 aménagement différé R1H à zone résidentielle urbaine de densité 3 exception 21 aménagement différé R3 21H tel que recommandé par le département d'infrastructure et aménagement du territoire et qu'il soit résolu qu'il n'y aura aucune période d'appel.
Tout le monde a besoin? Question? Tout le monde a papa?
Très bonne résolution.
11 point 6, Monsieur Lala. Achete du camion sur Ford, pour un coup de tour.
Que le Conseil municipal adopte le règlement 2018-13 afin d'autoriser la mère et la grépiaire à actoyer un contrat, un contrat à Rotten Ford Sales Limited pour l'achat d'un camion, une tonne, avec baigne pour la somme de 54 307 dollars excluant la TVH.
Secondé, Monsieur Zan? Question?
Est-ce que c'est le montant qui avait été pris dans le budget?
Ouais.
Ou ça pas dépensé?
Tout le monde a papa? Merci. 11 point 7, amendement à l'annexe A du programme de gestion d'urgence. Monsieur Zan?
Il soit résolu que le Conseil adopte le règlement 2018-103 étant un règlement pour modifier l'annexe A du règlement 2017-148 relativement au programme de gestion des urgences afin d'agir y voit comme un coordonnateur de la gestion communautaire d'urgence.
Secondé, Monsieur Grimard? Question? Tout le monde a papa? Merci. 11 point 8, achete d'un camion 4x4 à issue Saint avec Charu et Xavier, monsieur Berenquet.
Il soit résolu que le Conseil municipal adopte le règlement municipal 2018-714 était un règlement pour autoriser la mère et la grépiaire à signer un contrat avec équipement d'ours papino incorporé pour l'achat de camion 4x4 à issue Saint avec Charu et Xavier pour la somme de 272 784 dollars et 92 centimes excluant la TVH.
Secondé, Monsieur Grimard? Question? Tout le monde a papa? Merci. Amendement à l'lieu du parc Village Maurice, monsieur Lala.
Ok.
Clairema.
Qu'il soit résolu que le Conseil municipal approuve que les services communautaires mettent sur pied et en application un plan de partenariats avec des entreprises et des groupes communautaires afin d'amasser des fonds pour le développement du parc du village Maurice tel que recommandé.
Secondé, Monsieur Zan? Question? Tout le monde a papa? Merci. Et mutation de la structure du fossé chemin Clark. Monsieur Berenquet?
Attendu que l'état de la structure chemin Clark s'est détourné davantage en raison de la saturation permanente de la base de la rue et qu'un drainage est adéquat.
Excusez, excusez, parce qu'on peut le lire en anglais. Monsieur, hop, venez, chemin Clark?
Oui. Whereas Clark Road's structural condition is further deteriorated due to the permanent saturation of the subgrade and that proper drainage with suitable outlets are required along Clark Road to address the drainage and structural issues. Whereas the 2018 budget deliberations did not allocate funding for the construction of phase three of Clark Road, whereas the project objectives of Clark Road align with the ditch drainage study that council approves $200,000 to complete phase three of the Clark Road project, with $125,000 to be transferred from the ditch drainage study project and $75,000 from the federal gas tax.
Secondé, Madame Schwanier? Question?
Um, sorry, so what's what?
Tout le monde a papa? Merci. Waste treatment plant, I think we got this tonight, monsieur Julien. Nous avons une résolution.
Oui. Il soit résolu que le règlement 2018-...
Fait pas chantier en français.
En anglais, ok. It be resolved that the bylaw number 2018-106 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to award a contract to the entire Clean Water Agency to provide project management and design review services associated with waste treatment plant upgrades be adopted and be it resolved that bylaw number 2018-107 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the requirement documents in order to amend the scope of the contracts with RV Anderson Engineering from the current offset limit of $525,000 to an offset limit of $948,000 for the work associated with the sewage treatment facility be adopted.
Secondé, Monsieur Grimard? Question? Tout le monde a papa?
Je pense que... On avait dit que ça pouvait monter, mais il y a deux temps ça.
Oui, c'est exactement le même rapport qui a été présenté en avril. Là c'est juste parce qu'on avait besoin d'amender le contrat avec notre firme légale. Donc on a, c'est ce qu'on attendait, ça a été fait, donc c'est pour ça que c'est...
Qu'est-ce qu'on avait approuvé dans le budget? Dans le budget ça...
C'est tout approuvé selon le budget en 2018 là, on avait fait approuver ce montant-là. Là c'est juste qu'on fait le contrôle.
Ok.
Il y a qu'un point, monsieur Maire. Combien de temps que ça va prendre avant qu'on puisse procéder à la construction de ce grillage là?
Cette construction-là était prévue pour 2020. Donc c'est, on a un an là de finir les plans, les devis, toutes ces choses-là. De toute façon, on va en termes de construction.
Je te suis derrière, j'ai pris la rue Caron de Laurier. C'était épouvantable la santé qui arrive là. Je me demande les gens qui demeurent juste à l'est de l'arène Ostrice là, les plans qu'on va avoir, parce que là, c'était épouvantable ça a vu Caron.
C'est pour ça qu'on va de la...
Ouais, c'est pour ça que je dis qu'il s'apaise.
Ah moi je reste sur Chapman, aussitôt que je sors dehors, ça s'en a donc. Ah six. C'est affreux d'accorder.
Ça, on s'en finit.
Ah on sent tout quelque chose. Si c'est pas ça, c'est urso.
Et voilà. Tout le monde a papa? Merci. Règlement municipaux. Est-ce qu'il y en a qui voulaient sortir parce qu'on répond pour tout, font sortir?
Non, ok, parfait.
C'est des rédacto. Est-ce qu'il y en a qui voulaient sortir?
Ben je voudrais pas le sortir, mais j'aimerais apporter un point sur un item.
Tu sors. Tu sors.
Ben je le sors apparemment.
12 point quoi?
Je suis pas content de cette gueule là. Si je...
12 point quoi?
Ok, 12 point 17.
Ok. Monsieur Lala, on envoyait là, vous avez des trinques.
Lala, moi je vais en sortir un, moi tout de suite.
Ah, envoyez pas.
On peut sortir, à l'importe laquelle, des dérèpes municipaux là, qu'on peut prendre 12 point 4. Ça, c'est la même question que ça applique à toute la gang.
Ok.
Je peux le lire.
Envoyez pas, monsieur.
Il soit résolu que les règlements municipaux suivants soient adoptés. 12 point 1, 2018-67 pour amender le règlement sur les enseignes. 12 point 2, 2018-78 pour amender le règlement de zonage 23 05 rue Raymond. 12 03, 2018-69 pour amender le règlement de zonage 11 88 chez Mondulac. 12 point 5, 2018-85 pour cours d'eau municipale Ham and Maintenance. 12 point 6, 2018-86 cours d'eau municipale Avinet. 12 point 7, 2018... Whoa. 20... Non, c'est 17. 12 point 7, 2018-87 cours d'eau municipale Buciar Maintenance. 12 point 8, 2018-88 cours d'eau municipale Levage. 12 point 9, 2018-99 cours d'eau municipale Buciar. 12 point 10, 2018-90 cours d'eau municipale Posegain Main. 12 point 11, 2018-91 cours d'eau municipale Potreck. 12 point 12, 2018-92 cours d'eau municipale Rosensegain Est. 12 point 13, 2018-93 cours d'eau municipale... Nope. C'est tout ça?
Chenille?
Chenille? Ok, c'est beau. Pardon si c'est non.
Non, c'est sûr, c'est non.
12 point 14, 2018-94 cours d'eau municipale Louis Laptard. 12 point 15, 2018-95 cours d'eau municipale Pharmacie Clarence Creek. 12 point 16, 2018-96 cours d'eau municipale Régen Bal. 12 point 18, 2018-98 un règlement pour régulariser la destruction ou les dommages aux arbres. 12 point 19, 2018-99 pour remander les termes de référence du comité consultatif environnement. 12 point 20, 2018-100 pour signer une entente avec La Marche Électrique Incorporated pour l'achat et installation de génératrice arène au plain Autecreek et garage municipale. 12 point 21, 2018-101 pour signer une entente avec Synex Construction Limited pour remplacement d'un pont sauf sur le chemin baseline. 12 point 22, 2018-104 pour approuver un terme additionnel d'un an à l'entente avec Luduc Busline pour les routes 530 et 535.
Secondé, monsieur Lever. Tout le monde a papa? Merci. En retour, monsieur 12 point 4.
Euh, 12 point 4, 2018-84 cours d'eau municipale Ham. C'est pas là quelqu'un pour seconder.
Secondé, Madame Schwanier?
Euh, juste une question dans le général, je me suis ré, encore une fois cette année, pour toutes ces cours d'eau-là, euh, on fait pas juste envoyer les factures aux gens avec, ils avaient trente jours à payer. On le fait de la façon qu'on avait discuté les dernières années, où est-ce qu'on met l'information additionnelle aux résidents? Ok, merci.
C'est tout, je vous dis. Secondé, monsieur Grimard?
Je suis déjà secondé.
Secondé, tout le monde a papa? Merci. De prochaine, monsieur Lala.
Il soit résolu que le règlement municipal 12 17 soit adopté.
Ok. Secondé, monsieur Berenquet? Question?
La seule raison que j'ai demandé de leur tirer, de leur... Une discussion, c'est que moi ça fait plus que maintenant, j'ai demandé des questions concernant amender le règlement de stationnement. Et puis je n'ai pas attendu parler, ça vaut-il un an?
On a tout pas dit, monsieur Roy.
Ça aurait pu rentrer avec ça.
Oui.
Je peux répondre à la question. Euh, le règlement, c'est promener de bureau à l'autre là.
Mais je me rappelle que j'avais appelé le site de règlement.
Il est sur le mien comme c'est là. Et puis j'ai déjà parlé avec monsieur Roy. Puis on a, euh, qu'est-ce qu'on va vous proposer? C'est de mettre en place des guidelines euh, pour que ce soit toujours de la constante quantité de niveau développement au niveau du parking. Ça prend un petit peu plus de temps, mais quand on va arriver avec, ça va être compliqué.
Je pense que ça aurait pu être intrus avec ça.
Non, c'est trop compliqué. La carte est faite. On a toute la révision de tout, puis on a un nouveau...
Ça c'est surtout parce que...
On a un nouveau malade jeu, donc ça va être...
Ok. Tout le monde a papa? Merci. Parce qu'on arrive à la... Règlement confirmation. Monsieur Grimard?
Euh, monsieur Maire, si vous retournez plus loin, on va juste ajouter pour prendre une pause et recommencer la plénière. En plus, vous allez couvrir la régière pour relève.
Oui.
Est-ce que c'est le plan?
Oui.
Ok, comme ça, vous faites pas de règlement de confirmation.
On prend une pause. On prend une pause à la fin de la journée comme c'est fait. Ok. On donne pause. Stéphane.